All right, it's nine o'clock. Welcome, everyone. Let's stand for a prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you today for your blessings, opportunity to come here, Lord, and tend to our county business. I pray that you'll bless this meeting and give us wisdom and guidance, Lord, as we tend to all the issues. I pray you'll be with all of us affected by the COVID across the nation, Lord, and that you'll help provide the solutions to this, Lord, and our vaccines, and be with the sick, Lord, that are all around dealing with this COVID virus. All these things, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to our final meeting of the month of January 25, 2021. It's just after 9:00 a.m. Item number one gives you an opportunity to address the court on any non-agenda items in keeping with our Open Meetings Act. Anyone who would like to do that in general, of course, you may address specific items on the agenda. Moving on then to item number two, considering possibly approve our minutes from our last meeting two weeks ago, January the 11th.
Make a motion?
Motion to approve that set of minutes made by Commissioner Applewhite, seconded by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? There are none. Item number three, report from commissioners regarding roadwork status. I'll begin to my left with Commissioner Parker.
We spent most of the week last week after the holiday changing oil and getting our equipment, doing some work on our equipment and all, trying to get it ready for the summer months and trying to finish it up today. There wasn't a whole lot we could do with it raining and all like it was last week, so we moved in, moved up to the, everything up to the maintenance barn and Jeff had gotten our filters and stuff for us and all for that, so we spent most of the week last week doing that. Had a few little minor things that we had to go do, but other than that, well, that's kind of where we're at right now.
Can't work in the rain, huh? Y'all are getting soft. Commissioner Applewhite?
We, last week, we was on the Ken Road 1925. We was putting ramp on the road, trying to get the road with the, get it where we could, where it was drivable. We were shorthanded. We'd be, we was down just three of us and then, but we got, when we get everything, vacations and all that, get, we'll get back, we'll get four people, so it's just gonna take a little time. And people, you know, hop on the potholes, we just, it's gonna take a little time, but this rain don't help us a bit. When it's raining, it fix some and the rest of it get worse.
Thank you.
Well, we were also maintaining vehicles and equipment and fixing the potholes all over the county, so we still maybe got a little bit more of that to do, and we got, still gotta get my filters in for my maintainer, get it maintained, so that's what we're doing, trying to keep up with the rain.
Commissioner Parchman?
Like I said, due to the rain, you're only limited to so much you can do. We spent time patching potholes, cleaning ditches, and replacing cords.
All right, thank you, everyone. Item number four, considering possibly approve a pay increase for poll workers. We have Pam Holmes, our election administrator, here to discuss that item. Welcome, Pam. Step right up.
Thank you. I am here to petition the court for possible, to consider a raise for our, in the hourly wage for our poll workers. The current wage is $10 per hour, and I'd like to see it raised to 12. After some research last year, the majority of counties are already paying their poll workers $12 an hour, and some pay their judges slightly more.
How long have we been at $10, do you know?
That I don't know. It was at $10 when I came into office.
Are there, is some of our neighbors paying that much?
Yes.
Have any idea how that would affect us budget-wise?
The total payroll for poll workers for the November 3 election was slightly over $26,000, so you're talking a 20% increase.
That was just for that one election?
That one election. That was the doozy though, you know? And we did have some extra poll workers. I have to say that part of that amount was paid for by, out of the HAVA grant, the CARES grant. So, I don't have that number, but part of that was because they were extra workers that we had brought on in order to comply with the state regulations due to the COVID.
When is our next election?
May 1st, Saturday.
And that will be for city and what else?
The city is the only one that has sent me an order of election, and so, but it is a uniform election date, so I could hear from other entities. We're still open for that.
Do you have, would we need to make a special budget adjustment if we did this?
I don't believe so for this year.
Okay, you think you've got enough to do it to get you through the end of September?
Well, I don't anticipate more than two elections for this year, and actually, the May election is the only one that will fall in this fiscal year because the next one won't be until November, but you never know.
So you feel like we're behind the times?
I do.
Commissioners, questions?
And it's not, I must say, it's not an easy job. It's at least a 13-hour day on Election Day, and you don't get the leave. You don't, you know, so it's, and it's not easy. You have some people come in and say, "Well, why I'm not registered?" Because you didn't register, you know? I mean, it's, you have, you deal with a lot of issues on Election Day and even during early voting.
Commissioners, questions, discussion?
I know the state, they pay $12, right?
The, both of the major political parties pay $12 an hour, yes.
And then when the county takes over, like the major, just like it was the presidential election, we pay for the election office there, right?
I'm sorry?
We pay for the election workers and that, and the Titus County does the election.
Yes, we did.
Like I said, it looked like it'd be hard, kind of hard to, you know, they look at the pay raises and say, "I'm just gonna work one, I pay work the other." I don't, you know, that's why you, you know, I just think they need to be the same.
Yeah, can I ask, while we're not looking at the state standards, I mean, I realize sometimes I think that somebody is a little backward here about what they say, but I mean, shouldn't we be paid the same as the state pays? I mean, can I be, is my wrong here?
That's a question for Jimmy. Well, I guess that's, I guess that's why we're discussing it. I guess that's why, I don't know, I don't have the answer. I don't remember the last time anybody asked for a raise for poll workers, to tell you the truth. I don't remember this ever discussed. It's kind of out of sight, out of mind with me. I didn't realize that we had a differential.
Well, by 30% of the county voting, maybe that's why.
Anybody else?
I think it's a good idea, bring it up to speed. Plus, we also have an extra week. Probably gonna stick with that. I imagine that three-week early voting's gonna be something people stick with. Maybe it's just a COVID.
At some point for the May election, it is not.
It's not?
No.
Well, good.
We haven't had any state mandates to attach to this May 1st election yet.
I knew that was a extra week that people worked, and if we pay more in one election than we do the others, we're gonna have some shorthanded elections, so I'm good with it. I make a motion, we go ahead and approve it?
Commissioner Fitch makes the motion to approve a raise for poll workers from the current $10 to $12, and it's seconded by Commissioner Parchman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Caught him on a good day.
I guess I do.
Thank you, Pam. Item number five, discuss professional services agreement for licensed court interpreter services with possible action. I've got John Fitch's name on there, and I'll let him talk here in a minute, but we currently do not have a contract in place for a court interpreter, and it was determined that due to the amount of money that we're paying to an interpreter, that it needed to go through the appropriate process, and so Barbara did put out a request for proposals back a few months ago. A lot of time was spent developing a contract by John Colburn, our county attorney. The selection process involved grading and evaluating different applicants, and I think we had, did we have five, Barbara? Is that right, or was it four? There were five applicants originally that submitted for this in a variety of locations with different formats. Some just individuals, some were companies that employed multiple interpreters. The county, in county court, does not have to legally employ a certified court interpreter. We can use non-certified, and that's what we do. This, however, is required at the district court level, and due to the nature of our county, you know, we have a lot of needs for an interpreter. So I'm personally not comfortable in continuing to go without a contract. We know that we're potentially gonna spend in excess of $50,000. Therefore, we need to have a contract in place that spells out what the expectations are, what the pay is, when and how that pay is given, what are the stipulations if court is scheduled but yet then canceled or cut short, what are the travel, travel dollars involved if there's travel to and from the county, and so therefore, we reached, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, a decision point, or four weeks ago, a decision point where we considered the number one applicant, at least from the evaluations that were made, and that was John Kriegel. John's worked for the district court for a long time. The decision was made by this court in a three-to-two vote not to enter into a contractual agreement with Mr. Kriegel. So we come back here today, and we've got to continue to discuss this and figure out how we're going to come to a situation where the district court can employ a corporate court interpreter and do it in an appropriate and legal way. So that's kind of the background. Commissioner Fitch, what would you like to add to that?
I just wanna say, out of applicants, we did put in Mount Pleasant, Tyler, Longview, Texas, a can of papers. We sent an email to every licensed interpreter in the state, and we just got these five back. We did get some good resumes back. John Kriegel comes highly recommended by the, both district judges, although there were some issues with his charging that we were suspicious of, and other counties possibly, so, but if you look numbers to numbers, we had one interpreter send in their resume. They only do Chinese in Mandarin out of Houston, so that's really out of the question for us. We have two, we have John Kriegel's is his own company, one-man operation, and then we have Norma Meeks, preferred interpreters out of Tyler. They have four in herself interpreters. They're all master interpreters, except I think one, and I could have that resume confused with somebody else that was just the standard, basic interpreter. Then there's also Tyler interpreters, and they have some master interpreters in their crew. As far as money looks like, per hour to show up here with mileage or without mileage, John Kriegel was the highest at $312, $312 to come to court here. That was his 125 an hour times 2.5.
That's the minimum?
Minimum, yeah, I'm just going by minimums. Then, number, the cheaper one was the Norma Meeks. She's $281. She charges $95 an hour, two-hour minimum, and 57 cents a mile, and all of these interpreters can do the virtual Zoom also. They all came with great recommendations, great letters from other judges, other counties. They've worked all over the place. And then that Tyler interpreters is 150 an hour for two-hour minimum. They're $300. I really like this Norma Meeks company. She's highly preferred. She actually wrote a letter of recommendation for John Kriegel, because they all know each other, I guess, you know, the same profession. To me, it's kind of like finding an underwater welder. It's kind of a rare job description to try to find somebody that does this. And then with her having so many interpreters that work for her, I think it won't be no problem finding somebody and scheduling our court dates with Norma Meeks preferred interpreters. So I kind of like that company there. Maybe go with it. So, see what you guys think about it.
How many was there in that, John? How many did she have in, or did that?
She had at least four in herself, uh-huh. And then all of those interpreters, they also had letters of recommendation. They were all the district judges, federal judges, county judges. They worked in almost every county. They probably even been here before.
I will say that whoever you choose to, whatever your next step is, I think that next step is we don't just jump right to, well, we're gonna hire this person. We've got an existing contract format that John Mark put together. I think whoever you decide to move forward with, I think the next step is gonna be for John Mark to negotiate that contract. The contract as it stands may not be acceptable by whoever you choose, and there may need to be some adjustments made. So keep that in mind. We can't just assume that they're going to accept our contract. I think it's a good contract. I think it's a reasonable contract, and I don't see anything in the terms of Ms. Meeks that, you know, I see as a real problem, but nonetheless, we did have issues with whether they provide workers' comp insurance, and, you know, what is the minimum charge, and how much notice needs to be given?
Cancellation time, yeah. We did get another, one of the, one of the persons that applied, it's a Colorado company, and this guy works the Texas area. All they do is Zoom. They don't show up in person. They only do Zoom like in Laredo, but they sent in a application, so that's kind of out of the question, so, yeah. So we'll have to draw up a new, a contract. We'll use these guidelines for our contract. Should be real similar, what we've been thinking, as far as cancellation, your hours.
Travel.
And if it's travel or no travel, yeah. And talk to them some more, so. Still got one more step to go. All we'll be doing today is approving a company we want to work a contract with, so. Preferred interpreters.
Would they be getting a 1099, or just like be self-employed, or what?
They'd be getting a 1099. They're not employees of the county.
Like some of those other contractors had insurance, like on workers' comp, you know. I just think they need to supply that theirself, because you know.
They do. They had copies of their insurance, their liability and stuff in their resumes.
I think it's probably pretty uncommon to ask for a company like that to provide work comp. However, we did talk with Texas Association of Counties. They would not be covered for an on-the-job accident because they are not our employees, and they recommended, TAC recommended, whoever we used should have some kind of work comp coverage. Don't know where it comes from, but they should have some kind of work. I mean, it's a very obscure chance that they could be hurt, and you never know what people might do as far as holding the county responsible for something, so I think it's very inexpensive on an annual basis. So again, that might be a point in the contract that could be, that could be an issue. I don't know. What would y'all like to do today?
Make a motion. We can look at this other person that we got, the second and the second, whatever it was, from Tyler.
Norma Meeks, the number two applicant?
Preferred interpreters.
So your motion would be to have John Colburn enter into contractual negotiations with, what is her company name?
Preferred interpreters. Norma Meeks.
Norma Meeks, Tyler, Texas. All right, that's the motion by Commissioner Applewhite?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. Item number six, considering possibly approve a policy related to the payment of CDL, commercial driver's license fees and physicals. We discussed this two weeks ago. We tabled it, and we asked our resident rookie to look into this and tell us what he thinks we ought to do, what would be fair, who needs these physicals, and then decide if the county wants to pay some, any, none, all of it.
Basically, if you have a CDL, you have to get a physical every two years unless you have a medical condition, which adds every year. If you want to change that, you can go down to the driver's license office and fill out what they call a Class 10 CDL form, which is that puts a restriction on your license that you can only drive government vehicles, whether it be a fire truck, ambulance, dump truck for the county or the city, and that's the only way you can get exempt from a physical. And I talked to my guys about it, and they really don't want to do that because it just limits you to where you can go. You can't drive for anybody else. You're just strictly for that one area, you know?
So if they were only working and were only for the rest of their life, only gonna work for the county, they could, they could get that exemption and not have a required physical?
Right.
Okay, but they're saying they want to keep that up and not lose that right to be able to drive for somebody else. Let's say they were working part-time, you know, on the weekend for somebody else, something like that.
Right.
Thank you for looking into that. Everybody understand that? Do most of your employees keep a full CDL with the required annual physical or every-two-year physical?
I've got three that do the physical, one that don't. It's just a...
He got that exemption?
Yeah, and then I've got it also. I've got the exemption also. I don't do a physical every, every two years.
Anybody, do you have any idea what that physical costs every two years?
$85?
Eighty, eighty-five dollars.
Just had somebody go, "Will you use Dr. Mattkin?" I have two out of my guys that want to keep theirs up. I have the exemption, so.
I've got one guy that's going today to get his. He's got a appointment to San Diego to get his. It's time for his.
And it's not covered by our insurance once they get that kind of physical?
I don't think so. And in the past, from what I can gather, from, in the past, we have paid for the physical, unless it was a new employee, and a new employee would pay, we pay for the first license and the physical, and then from there on, just physical. It's the way I can, the way I've understood it to be.
Is the license a one-time cost?
No, license, you have to, is it, what is it, Jeff, now, three or, I mean, five or eight years?
Eight years.
Eight years on the license, man? I'll find out next month.
How much is that? Do you know how much that is?
About 95, yeah, 90, 95 dollars. Depending on what endorsements you've got, really. If you've got, got the tiger endorsement, then I think it's a little bit more. I've got, got it on land. Something else, I can't remember what the endorsement is I've got on land, but, but that's, that's what I have understood that we've always done, is the physical, and then the employees is liable for their own license.
Except for that first time, you said?
Except for the first time.
What's the thought behind that? To enable them to get that license if they don't already have it?
If they don't already have it, yeah. If they don't, don't have it, and I think that's, Barbara might could tell us, I think that's what we done on the three guys that were hired during the unit system. We paid for the license and physical the first time, and then, I meant to ask Larry this morning if that's what, what it was. I forgot him, but if I'm not mistaken, that's what we did. We paid for the license and physical the very first time, because he didn't, he didn't have his, I don't know, did Cookie have his?
Cookie had his.
Cookie had his, and then John's, Robert didn't have his, did he?
No, they had to pay, although they drove everything big for Lumina, they had to get an actual license, and so they went through some kind of program all at once. If you hire somebody and they've worked a while and they want to get a CDL, it's about a six-month process. It's a pretty good commitment to get it all done. And then they used one of our trucks to go take the driving test, so I don't know if that's really gonna happen a lot, but as far as, these physicals are mainly on Class A driver's license, the ones that guys work for me. The Class B, there's not many people that have them. They, if they have them, they, like me, they just, they have that restriction on there where they don't have to have the physical, so. Most companies do, there are a lot of companies that do pay for the physical for their CDL, and these are Class A licenses. So we have two, we have a Kenworth and a Peterbilt, but you have to have a Class A license to drive that particular truck. Pull that trailer. So it's pretty valuable to have it. I, I think what's fair, just to clear all this up, is to pay for the physical as, as you need to. If you have somebody that has it, I think it'd be okay, pay for that physical.
First-time license?
No license fees. I'm not interested in that. Just, I just want to deal with the physicals.
Even on the first time?
Yeah.
For a guy that comes to work and has to get it to satisfy your requirements?
Yeah, it'd be pretty tough to hire somebody that didn't have a CDL to begin with, to me. Otherwise, they just, you'd know that person's not gonna drive anything with air brakes. You know, they can drive most everything else we have, so that'd be up to the commissioner, but.
You want to put a cap?
I'd make a...
Put a cap on that physical cost if we find the best rate here in town. Maybe it's Dr. Mattkin, and we agree to pay.
I think he's the only place in town you can get a physical for.
No, there's two more. Jessica Allen in Rios. Rios in the hospital. Jessica Allen's next to Herschel's in that clinic right there.
Okay.
And right now, the, I'll pass this along to you, the, I've been talking with a college. They have started up a new CDL school out there. They're using the old pad south of the school that the police academy was using for their parking and all, and I've done some work on the road and all out there for them where they can get in and out. And they told me Friday, when I was talking to them, that, that it looked like that it was, this was gonna be, end up being a licensing area, or they would be a licensing area. As it is right now, some places, some Arlington and I think Paris and Texan, and said that as of right now, it's looking like that they were gonna be approved to be the, because they were shutting the one down, I think it was in Arlington, and it said it looked like they were gonna get to be the, so that'll, that'll help all of us here in this area too, if they can do that, so.
Y'all think we need the need to pay for a license for a new employee in the future? I mean, it could happen. We could have some retirees and some turnover and have to send somebody to school to get a CDL. I mean, it could happen. Do you want to just come back to that? Do you want to just come back to that subject later, if we feel the need for it? Or we could pass it today that, you know, on a first-time basis, we would pay for that license?
Only if, and, and I don't have a problem with it since we, if I'm not mistaken, like I say, I could be mistaken, but I think we've paid for it in the past. It's just a one-time deal there that, that we did, maybe with those three or whatever, that didn't have them, but I don't have a problem paying for it the first time. If we've got an employee that, that we think is going to be a good employee and we want him to, to go through it, then I don't have a problem.
Maybe we need to include that, include paying for the course, to go through the course. Although, I mean, I took video online and stuff, it's tough to learn all that. If you, I don't know what that course is going to cost, but maybe pay for the tuition or something for that course if, if they offer it, versus just doing it on your own and just paying for the license fee itself. Just going to go with just the fees, like ninety-seven dollars or something?
The only ones that I have known, known of and dealt with have just done it on their own.
Yeah, that's what, that's all we've ever done.
I mean, it's, it's, it requires some studying and whatnot, but it's not a, not a...
I can see where you'd have a need, we, we possibly have a need for that, you know, to send somebody to school to get licensed.
Well, I think that would be something that we'd look at at that time.
Maybe pay for the license, I'll take that back, just pay for their first-time license.
Pay for the license and first-time.
Have the initiative, they can learn, they can go to school, they can learn it on their own.
Physical and after that, then.
Everybody in agreement with that?
Yep.
Worded for first-time license.
The motion is by Commissioner Fitch to...
Pay for first-time license, fee of the license.
If applicable.
Yes, and then pay for physicals.
That doesn't mean the first time that a new employee comes to, let's say, employee comes to work and he's...
Getting the license for the first time.
Six months later, his, okay, getting, getting the license for the first time, not the first time that it's due for renewal while he's under county employment.
That's right, yeah, that could be interpreted wrong.
So wait, a new, newly acquired CDL license will be paid for the first time by the county for that employee, but not subsequent license fees? And...
Physicals, the ones that need, that want to keep their physical up on their license, pay for that physical, and that's every two years.
Yes.
How about we pay up to the lowest going, the lowest going rate?
Yeah, we need to check who's, what they're charging us, and give, knowing anybody who went to those other dollars.
They're all, they're all pretty close to the same.
How about we say up to a hundred dollars, subject, subject to revision?
Yeah.
When prices go up? Okay, there's a motion.
I'll second.
There's a second. Any discussion? Okay, so the motion is that the county agrees to pay for the license fee the first time that a new employee has to apply for a CDL, and subsequent to that, the employee is responsible for that license renewal fee. The county will also pay for the biannual physical up to a one-hundred-dollar cost, subject to price adjustment in future years.
Now, I do have an employee of mine that has a heart condition, so he's subject every, every year to get his, does that, give me a clue that's...
Unless you want to make any, okay, I did say, I did say biannual, so you want to remove that?
I mean, it covers...
Yeah, okay, so we'll remove, remove that. We will pay for either a annual or biannual, whichever is applicable. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. We get a second on it?
Yeah, I did.
Okay. Aye, sounds good.
Opposed, no one? All right, there we go.
And won't this need to be added to or put in our handbook?
I think so. James, will you help me remember to do that, add it in there? Okay, let's move on to item number seven. Item number seven, focus your attention on the building of the southeast corner of the county annex property. You have two owners back there, two separate buildings, although the buildings appear to be contiguous, there are two separate owners. We're talking about the owner on the north side, Charlotte Spears. Charlotte Spears is the widow of James Spears. James Spears appeared in our court multiple times back in 2016. And this building is leaking apparently at the ground level, and it is Ms. Spears' belief, and it was Mr. Spears' belief, that that water was due to watershed coming from county property, which is higher than their building, and so it was slowing down into their building, and the leak appears to be most prominent at the northwest corner of their building, but primarily along that north wall. And I've got some old minutes that I want to read to you, because I think only Jimmy was here at the time we dealt with this, and just kind of tell you, give you a little bit of history. I'll do that after I read Ms. Spears' letter. First of all, for today, "Dear Judge Lee, thank you for the offer to address the Commissioners' Court on January 25th. I will not be at the meeting, but please submit my letter of December 31st for the Court's consideration. As you know, I am new to the role of property manager. I own the building at 106 South Jefferson, together with my daughter and son-in-law. Respectfully, I request a written response to my letter so I can discuss any proposals with my children. Yours truly, Charlotte Spears." This is her letter from December 31, 2020. "To the Judge and Commissioners regarding groundwater management needs and expenses at 106 South Jefferson. As you know, the county previously paid for work to hopefully eliminate the problem. My late husband, James, at the request of the county, researched and offered possible solutions. The county selected and paid for one of the options. But in 2019 and '20, following very soaking rains, flooding occurred again. Earlier this year, I informed you and Commissioner Fitch of the problem. Per your advice, I began the task of seeking a solution. I apologize for the delay in getting back to you. The advice of Mr. Wayne Stoddenmeyer is enclosed. To be sure it was only groundwater, the newly resurfaced exterior facade and roof were inspected and found to be solid. I request the county enact this work or provide a different solution with the contractor of your choosing. Tenants who had stayed after the original floodings due to the problems of soaked carpets and walls and unhealthy smells moved out. I request reimbursement for lost income and remediation expenses due to flooding. See the enclosures. Thank you for your attention to this very important matter." This is a letter from Wayne Stoddenmeyer, who is the Tex- dot Aviation Airport Inspector. "Dear Sir, the above-referenced property is the site of an office building which is currently having drainage issue on the north side. After looking at the water damage inside at the northwest corner of the building, it appears that the drainage is coming from water that seeps down along the outside of the lower, that seeps down along the outside of the lower-level north wall. The soil and sidewalk surfaces for ten feet north of the wall drain southward to the wall. The twenty feet of soil from the northwest corner along the building is literally flat, and when it rains hard for an extended period, the water falls. Fails to drain away down the slope to the east. There needs to be a swale about halfway between the sidewalk and the north exterior wall of the building sloping to the east to allow water to drain. A wire screen made for the open end of the pipe should be installed to keep animals from getting in the pipe and either plugging the pipe or becoming trapped themselves. Please call me if additional information is needed. This site visit was done as a favor on request of the owner." She has given me expenses and loss of income due to flooding. She's got the cost of Service Pro, who I guess came out and removed the water and did cleanup, Jimmy's Floor Care, and Bill Russell Repairs. That totals about sixteen hundred dollars, sixteen hundred and thirty dollars for those three vendors. Tenants' lost income, we have Kim Forrest, a hundred fifty dollars monthly, and B A R Transportation, seven hundred dollars monthly. And she says she lost those tenants back in May and April. She's given me copies of those bills. So I'm going to read to you, we had a couple of meetings that we have minutes for, this was back in June 27 of 2016. At that time, we had Commissioners Riddle, Fields, Hinton, and Parker. Item number nine, was consider and possibly take action on assisting adjacent property owner next to annex with drainage issues. James Spears owns property next to the annex, shares the parking lot. Couple of offices in his building have had water coming into their offices due to the heavy rainfall. He contacted a structural engineer from Preefer who told him that the problem was that the dirt was two feet above the foundation. He recommended removing the soil and to build a retaining wall. He's gotten a quote from Bobcat to add a French drain, but they will not guarantee this will fix the problem. Mr. Spears feels it's the county's responsibility to pay to have this done, since it is their shrubs and soil causing the problem. Judge Lee asked which came first, the building or the landscaping? If the building was built last, it might have been built too low, therefore it wouldn't be the county's responsibility. Commissioner Fields recommended removing the shrubs and letting someone look at it. Concrete possibly could be put in there. Motion was made by Judge Lee, seconded by Commissioner Riddle, for Mr. Spears to find out the ages of the respective buildings and determine whose building was there first, and to get a bid for concrete, removing the dirt and shrubbery with the guarantee that this will fix the problem, and then put this on the next agenda. Motion passed unanimously. We didn't hear from Mr. Spears again for a while, September 12, same year. Item, discuss and possibly take action on assisting property owner next to annex with drainage issues, so same, same item. James Spears presented the Court with a proposal from Suretree Landscaping in the amount of seventeen hundred fifty dollars, which was expanded from the previous proposal submitted to include clarification of adding plastic lanyard against the wall, treating the wall with sealant, and installing a French drain with fabric filled with gravel. Motion was made by Commissioner Fields and seconded by Commissioner Hinton to assist the property owner next to the annex on the north side with drainage issues by improve, approving the payment of seventeen hundred fifty dollars to Suretree Landscaping. I personally observed that work that was done. It appeared to me that he did exactly what he said he would do, and lined that wall with material, dug out all that dirt, all that shrubbery, put in a French drain with gravel, and obviously it worked for some time. Why it's still leaking in that building, I cannot tell you. I am not an engineer, and I haven't investigated that. As I go over there and look at it, it does appear that a lot of dirt and sediment is now on top of that drainage area there that, that runs from, again, the northwest corner of that building to out to the street. Now, is dirt and sediment clogged up that French drain? I don't know. Is there roots that have grown into that pipe that was the French drain? I don't know. But as I recall, there was a good-sized pipe, maybe eight inches, with perforations in it, and gravel was put on top of that drain that appeared that water at that problem point would go down into that ground and be sent out to the street, to the drain. That's as much as I know. What would you like to do?
I personally don't think we're, we're held responsible for it. I mean, it's not our building. I went and looked at it, there's enough fall from one end to the other, they could, they could dig it out, but I pretty well, they're just, same way or sealed off, but I think it's, should be on us to have to fix it all the time.
What little I know about, and I'm not leading y'all one way or another, but let's say that you owned that building out there, and you were the first one on that block to put anything there, and then someone else comes in around you and builds up higher, builds drainage systems for their building, builds a sidewalk, and all of a sudden, there are water problems being created for that building owner. In other words, you can think of, a lot of situations come up, not quite the same, similar situations in, in development, real estate development, and there have been lawsuits, and there is case law that says that if you come in and do something that negatively impacts your neighbor, you know, you could be responsible for it. I don't know if that's the case here. I don't know if we built sidewalks or drainage gutters, or if we built our building higher. I don't know if something we did before that building was there created this problem or not. I do know that his building was there prior to that, the annex building. So I don't know if that changes your mind or your attitude that there might be some responsibility on the part of, of the county. At some point, I believe that the work that we did for the, for the landowner there, for Mr. Spears, he was the one that went out and got the engineer. He had the engineer suggest a problem, suggested a fix, the work was bid out, it appeared to me that the work was done properly and reasonably, the county paid for it. How many times are we going to have to pay for it in the future? In other words, where does this end? I don't know. I, I'd like to fix it once and for all and not have them continually coming back to the county and saying it's the county's fault. I don't know if it's the county's fault. I don't know if it's water that's running down the side of their building from north blowing rain. I don't know if it's drainage water coming off of the rest of the annex building and rolling over the sidewalk, and, and it can't quickly get enough water through that French drain and out to the street, and so therefore it seeps in there where their wall hits the slab. That's, that's what seems logical to me. Where does the fault lie? Don't know. But thank you for your comments.
Well, I talked to John Mark, and he said maybe us coming up with a good solution would stop this from having any legal activity that would cost more than just fixing it. So...
What of your suggestion?
Just the correct fix. I don't know what, you could dig out and put a trench all the way down to that slab out to the street. You can put in another French drain, had a guy look at it, he wants to put in a bigger French drain with more drain vents all the way down that building, plus add a roof gutter along the side of that wall, probably six thousand dollars worth of repair. Will that fix the ground being moist up against that wall? That's another thing, is that wall treated good enough or what? Somebody's going to have to fix it, it's got some sense. It's pretty, it's got two or three different ways it could be fixed, so we'd have to investigate it further if we decided we want to do it ourselves, and then have them sign something that we're not responsible for it, for any, not liable for it, because there's possibly some water seeping in the back of that building. Who, who knows? There's a pretty good ditch runs along the back edge of the building, so. There we are, pretty complicated.
I think if they dug out the cell problem, they, they fix it, fix the problem. I think if they dug out the silt problem, they'd fix the problem.
Well, I will say that there's a lot more dirt and silt that is now on top of that...
Looks like pure dirt.
...ditch area where the French drain was originally installed. And, you know, that fine silt that's washed in over the last few years may have clogged up and made the French drain not function as well as before. I don't, I promise you, they tug out a lot of dirt, and it really looked like a well-done job to me. I don't still have those pictures on my phone, but I remember being impressed with how deep he went down. I just think we may have a French drain that is, that is not functional any longer, or not functional, adequately functional, because that top layer of dirt and silt keeps that water from being able to penetrate down and drain out through that perforated pipe quickly enough. Maybe some tweaking to that French drain system would work. Want to go in there and dig it out completely and put a concrete-lined drainage ditch in there? I'm not sure what else the county could do beyond that. We can't be responsible for water that's falling down their exterior wall, or if there's roof issues and it's coming down there. All we can do is form a barrier that keeps water from county property flowing towards that building. I would say that's where our responsibility ends. I thought we had done that, but perhaps that's, French drain needs to continue to be maintained. I'm not a builder, I don't know much about French drains. Again, where does it end? If we come up with a solution and we do the work and it doesn't fix it, or five years from now, we're dealing with the same thing, is it still our fault? Don't know. But I agree, we need to have something that's done where that building owner says, okay, the county has satisfied their responsibility, and I will no longer look to them for recourse.
I wonder if we come out about three foot of the sidewalk all the way down that building, slopes pretty naturally out to the street, maybe put an angle up against the wall, and then sidewalk it all the way down. Any water that comes there is gonna hit that sidewalk. It's gonna get away from that building and stay dry around the wall there. That might be an option. We could get, possibly get some more people to look at it. Had one, one person look at it, he said put in a bigger French drain. Maybe get some other contractors, see what their ideas are, what they charge, will we make any decisions?
I don't know what Wade Stottmeyer's qualifications are, but again, there needs to be a swale about halfway between the sidewalk and the northern exterior wall when it swells. It's not necessarily concrete lined though, right?
Wouldn't have to be.
Wouldn't have to be, but I think that would, would help matter, myself.
Yeah, asphalt, people.
Yeah, one or the other.
I think if they dig it out, they need to seal that wall, and then, because obviously it's got cracks in it where it's allowing the water, it'll be only to do the damage. Has plastic up against the wall, thick plastic. I don't know if it's glued on the sidewalk because it's pushed up against there so much with the dirt and gravel, but the top, about four inches, that plastic just rolls over, it just hangs down, and if rain comes down that wall, it drips between the plastic and the wall, which is not a lot of moisture. I don't know if that's some of the moisture. To me, it seems like that wall should be, should have been coated with something.
Well, I do know that the, the east building on the south side, it has been leaking for a while. That's the fair office, and I'm in and out of there quite a bit. I hadn't noticed it here recently because it's been a little while since I've been in there, but I do know in the past that it has been, been leaking, running down the wall from the, from the top to bottom. And it's right, right at the wall between the two buildings. Or as I say, between the two buildings, really, really all the same building, but they, it was that wall between them. The entrance to Ms. Spears' building is on the, the east side here going in. The other two entrances to the other, other part of the building is, is both on the south, to Patty Clement's Insurance and, and the fair office, which is her building too. We just use it as, as the fair office. And it, it has been leaking for a while, or was. Like I say, it's been a while since I've been in there. I can find out if it still is or not, but they were trying to get it stopped at one time. I know Patty was working on that at one time. So, I don't know if, but they're saying that it's, it's all coming from us, so who knows? I mean, that's...
Well, here's what I think you should consider. You've got, she's gotten hold of Mr. Stottmeyer, he may be really good at determining the problem here. I would like for the responsibility to determine the problem and how to fix the problem, let it be determined by her. And then, let us see what a bid for the cost of doing that work would be. Whoever they wanna hire, we're not gonna hire them, we're not gonna oversee it, we're not gonna evaluate, we're not going to sign off on it. We're simply gonna say, we're gonna give you this amount of money, and we're gonna want a signed release from you.
Saying that we're through.
We're done. You, you determine the problem, you determine the fix, you determine the contractor, and you determine the money, and we will compensate you this amount of money towards that. But I don't wanna be the one who's evaluating that job and who continually is second-guess as whether or not the work was done right.
I see other issues, like you're saying, that south wall, even her west wall, the back, has some issues, just me looking at it, somebody needs to know what they're looking at to say, there's some problems here too. We're just dealing with the north wall, and put a stop to it. And they, like I said, she can find out what would fix it, and then we can, we can vote to pay a portion of it, or whatever we wanna do. But us making the decision every time is a shot in the dark. That last fix is, is just questionable, so that sounds like a good plan.
What about her expenses to date?
I'm not gonna go with that, because that trucking company that was in there was on the south side of that building, and that probably deals with that issue that you're talking about with the other wall, that south wall leaking, was why their side, if that's why they moved out, was because the water issue or facilities or whatever. I hadn't talked to them to know.
Well, it indicates that the tenant was lost back on May 1st and April 15th, and yet we didn't hear from her until December, so I don't see that lost rents is our problem.
When I was over checking on it last year, that renter was there. I don't remember what month it was when this first came up, and we had our landscape guy that put in that French drain, go check, check everything out about it, and he said it was fine. She had a roofer go check her building, and he said it was fine, it wasn't their fault, it wasn't the roof. So, that's where it stood, thought everything was gonna be fine. So, this has come up since then, so... Say, we need to put that into a motion where she can find out what's causing the problem and what would be the solution herself.
What about the payment of any of the $1,630 worth of flooding cleanup?
I think we probably ought to wait until we see what, what else is gonna come, come about before we make any kind of payment.
You wanna put it in the form of a motion that the county...
This time, I don't feel like we're responsible for her rent loss.
The county will consider a dollar amount to pay towards repairs as determined by Ms. Spears. And do the homework. Motion by Commissioner Fitch to tell Ms. Spears that the county will contribute some or all toward the expense of fixing the problem, to be determined her or whoever she uses to make that determination. But the county does not want to assess the problem or fix the problem. We want it to be all according to her. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Fitch. I'll need a second if that sounds like something you wanna do.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Parker. Any more discussion on the subject? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, I will communicate in writing to Mrs. Spears, and I'll give you a copy of Item number eight, considering possibly approve a resolution supporting in its entirety a document called, "The State of Texas and Texas Political Subdivisions Opioid Abatement Fund Council and Settlement Allocation Term Sheet." That's a long one. All right, I did email to the, to each of the commissioners, a document simply entitled "Resolution." A little background on this for those of you that, I guess everybody was here when we initiated the participation in the opioid lawsuit. And this is a class-action suit brought against manufacturers of opioid drugs. These are painkiller drugs that have been so predominant in the news for the last few years. And the allegations are numerous, I won't go into those, but basically, the, they're asking for responsibility on behalf of the drug manufacturers that made these drugs and that provided these drugs freely without adequate warning. I don't know, I'm just giving you a short version there. But the county agreed to participate with a firm out of Tyler that would represent us along with other counties. There are many law firms involved in this, there are many, many counties in the state of Texas, if not all, that are participating in this. We have no idea what the outcome will be. Since this began, I've been relying heavily on Judge Nathaniel Moran out of Smith County, who's a friend of mine, and he is an attorney, and he has been part of the, the group that has worked at this term sheet. Now, the lawsuit has not been settled, hasn't gone to trial, there is no dollar figure that has been determined yet. What this resolution does is it establishes some parameters so that if and when a settlement is reached, it predetermines where that money goes. We don't want it all to go to the state of Texas. Certainly, it's not all gonna go to the counties, but it's, it's been identified what appropriate entities are that should get some of these funds. And something like, I think 15% would go to the county, and a good percentage would go to hospitals and other medical treatment facilities that have borne the brunt of the opioid problem, addictions and illnesses and problems brought on by addiction. And so, again, we have, we are going to retain the right to decide how much we agree to settle for when that day comes, if and when a settlement is reached, but in the meantime, we can have a framework so that that dollar figure can get plugged in, and the calculations made, and we know in advance where that money is going to go. Now, this is a two-page-and-a-half resolution, and I'm trying to keep this simple, and I don't purport to understand it in its entirety, but I do trust Judge Moran, and he's a very sharp guy, and I do believe that when he tells me that we wanna be part of this approval of this format, so that we are ready when the settlement is ultimately made. Let me see if this will help any better to, for you to understand. This resolution, whereas Titus County obtained information indicating that certain drug companies and their corporate affiliates, parents, subsidiaries, and other defendants may be added to the litigation, and have engaged in fraudulent and/or reckless marketing and distribution of opioids that have resulted in addictions and overdose. And whereas these actions, conduct and misconduct have resulted in significant financial costs to the county. And whereas on May 13th of 2020, the state of Texas, through the Office of the Attorney General and a negotiation group for Texas political subdivisions, entered into an agreement entitled, "The Texas Opioid Abatement Fund Council and Settlement Allocation Term Sheet." We're gonna refer to that as the term sheet. Approving the allocation of any and all opioid settlement funds within the state of Texas, the Texas term sheet is attached as an exhibit. Okay, I'll stop reading for a second. That negotiation group for these Texas political subdivisions, of which we are one, Judge Moran is a part of that group. Now, continue back. Whereas the special counsel and the state of Texas have recommended that Titus County Commissioners Court support the adoption and approval of the Texas term sheet in its entirety. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the court, support the adoption and approval of the Texas term sheet in its entirety, and we find as follows. There is a substantial need for repayment of opioid-related expenditures and payment to abate opioid-related harms in and about Titus County. And B, the county Commissioners Court supports in its entirety the state of Texas and political subdivisions opioid abatement fund council and settlement allocation term sheet. The court understands that the purpose of this term sheet is to permit collaboration between the state of Texas and political subdivisions to explore and potentially effectuate resolution of the opioid litigation against pharmaceutical supply chain participants. We understand that an additional purpose is to create an effective means of distributing any potential settlement funds obtained under this term sheet between the state of Texas and the political subdivisions in a manner and means that would promote an effective and meaningful use of the funds in abating the opioid epidemic in this county and throughout If you ask me any more questions about this, I'm not sure I can answer, but I'll try. So, it is my recommendation that we do what we have been asked to do by this negotiation group, and that we say, yes, Titus County will participate in this term sheet, so that hopefully Titus County gets treated as fairly as possible, and the monies go for distribution in the most meaningful way.
I make a motion to approve the resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parkman. All in, well, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Item number nine, discuss formation of a committee to finalize the volunteer fire department contract with possible action. I've given each of you a document here with some yellow and chartreuse ink on it. Last week, I attended the chief's meeting at the fire station in the park, and I presented to those in attendance this contract. We went, we read through it, they had been provided a copy in advance of the meeting so that they had a chance... They had been provided a copy in advance of the meeting so that they had a chance to read over it. And I was very pleased with their reaction. They were not up in arms about this. They had a few questions, a few comments, and this document here reflects some of those comments that they had. I don't believe there are any deal killers here. First of all, I thought one of the most significant items in this document was us telling them that if you failed to timely file your run sheets and training summaries to the auditor would result in forfeiture of their fixed money, their $1,200 a month payment for each month that that report was late. Now, we're giving them 30 days to get these reports in. So for the month ended January 31, they have until the end of February to submit their report. If they don't have it in by February 28, they lose one of their $1,200 monthly payments. If they go another month to the end of March and still don't have it, they lose another one, and so on and so forth. So this encourages, and they understand the need and agree for the need to file timely reports. So that really was not much of an issue. Rather than going into all these details here, I guess suffice it to say that a lot of this was just questioning the wording and suggesting a better way to word it. There are some issues in here about whether the county had the right to audit their fundraiser money, how often and when they would provide an annual financial report. Would it be based on their fiscal year like the county is on, or their calendar year? The number of drills that they would have to have each month. Rather than getting into all those details, here's my suggestion, and this was, they are in agreement with this, and they've even in fact identified three of the chiefs that they would like to be part of this committee. My suggestion is that two members of this court, I'm happy to be one of those, I'm happy to let one of the two of y'all be on it. So two of us attend, in other words, a number that does not constitute a quorum, and I would like Barbara to be a part of that committee because she was one of the drafters of this document. So if we could have two members of this five-man court, Barbara and three of the chiefs, I believe Chief Clark, oh, I can't even remember who the other two were, I apologize, would meet here in the next couple of weeks. I think that the final details could be worked out probably in an hour. And then we would have a document that would be submitted to each of those fire departments, and either they would say, we agree to it, or we don't agree to it. And in which case, then we would have to decide, are we going to continue to support financially those that don't choose to participate, or are they going to agree to participate? I don't know where that might end up. There could always be somebody that says, you know what, I don't feel good about this, I don't think it's fair, and I don't want to commit to what the county is asking. I don't know, but we're going to try to come up with a document that is fair for both sides. That's what I got. Jimmy, you be interested in that? You've been the longest fireman here.
Well, I was part of the committee that we went through and done a bunch of work trying to get something similar to this done here a few years back, and I'd like to see Dana and the judge be on the committee.
Dana, what you think about? I know you, I mean, you've been, your head's been in the volunteer fire department since Argo cranked up. You've been active with it a lot, knowing what was going on with that volunteer fire department there, so I feel good with that, too.
Before you decide who the two people are, does this sound like a reasonable plan here?
Yeah, it sounds good. And then, like I said, the Talco contract's a little different.
It's going to have to be work a little different.
Yeah, I like what I see so far.
Okay. Well, what do you think? Would you be willing to do that?
Guess I got thrown under the bus, brother.
No.
Oh, no. Come on, man.
No, I'll do it. I'll do it.
I really think that the heavy lifting's been done on this. You know, I needed one of you guys, or I thought I did, when I went to that chief's meeting the other night by myself, but I didn't. I think this is a reasonable group of guys for the most part, and we really got it whittled down to a very reasonable number of items. And it'll be good for one of you to understand, you know, what the details that are in this and to be able to hear comments from them. And, you know, if this becomes more of a burden than we think, and we have to come back to the court, then we'll do that. But I'm hoping that I can come back to you here in a couple of weeks, maybe two meetings, and present to you a final product.
You know, we got one of the best volunteer fire departments we got, you know, all over. They do a really good job. And like I said, it's been, they've been going to a lot of calls here lately, but, you know, I back them 100%. You know, like they do to do their job, well, help them get along with jobs.
Right.
I don't mind helping them. I'd be glad to do that.
Okay, thank you. And this, again, is a way that we will be able to further, better understand the needs and the struggles of our volunteer fire departments so that we can factor that in when it comes time to renegotiate that very large city contract within the next couple of days, I mean, next couple of years. So my suggested action item here is that you approve the formation of a committee to consist of three chiefs, auditor, judge, and Commissioner Precinct III to be a part of that committee to finalize the details and bring you a final contract with each of the volunteer fire departments. Make that motion? Motion is made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner, who said that? Commissioner Applewhite. Is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, they're getting easier here. Number 10, consider and possibly approve the donation of a 2008 Ford Crown Victoria to Morris County. Ray Barrett was here at the last meeting, told you the background on this, and we really need to get rid of this vehicle that's sitting and doing nothing.
Make a motion that we give the car.
Motion to donate is made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All in favor say aye. Item number 11, consider and possibly nominate a candidate for consideration to fill a vacancy on the Titus County Appraisal District Board of Directors. Mentioned this to you, I think, two meetings ago, that Bobby Parr had retired after 10 years of service, leaving an opening on the CAD Board of Directors. This is not the board that hears complaints from taxpayers that want to come and protest the valuation of their property. This is the overall board that hires the chief appraiser, Shirley, and develops the budget and manages the, you know, just the overall direction of that entity. I have been in communication with a member of the board itself to ask them if they had any ideas. I've talked to Judge Marshall, who has the most controlling votes. And just to be clear, whoever we determine and nominate, if we nominate, will be submitted. That doesn't mean that's who it's going to be. It means that, here you go, here's another name board. The board will look at those names and decide amongst themselves who they will choose from those submitted names. As of last week, there was only one name that had been submitted, and I can't remember if that was somebody off of the Hartsbluff or the Chapel Hill School Board. I think it was the Chapel Hill School Board, and I don't know that, it was a lady, and I don't know her name. But I think that we ought to at least nominate somebody. And I've thought about it, thought about it, as to who I would be interested in, and our previous nomination from years ago was Greg Holt. Greg Holt came off the board. He was a good board member, the board members liked him. I asked him if he was still interested. He said, no, I really am not interested. I did that, and thank you very much, but I'm not interested in doing it again. Spoke to another individual, friend of mine, and I think has good qualifications, and that's Mitchell Walker. I don't know if all of you know Mitchell Walker. Mitchell is retired from DeCharron, is their chief financial officer. Mitchell is the author of a book about budgeting, and that's primarily what he does now, is he promotes his book about personal budgeting and management. Mitchell has had a number of financial-related occupations. He's been business owner, insurance salesman, restaurant owner, somebody that I know closely and I believe has the qualities of somebody that I want representing that board. That's a name that I'm giving to you, and he is willing and interested. He has spoken with at least one board member to understand the job and to make sure that was something he felt like he could commit to and was interested and had the skill set for. So that is one name that I have. You're welcome to come up with your own name, if you have one.
I talked to a couple, and they, neither one of the ones I talked to were interested, so you interested?
No. I talked to three folks, and they weren't interested, so couldn't find anybody else brainstorming. So that sounds good to me.
Any of y'all know Mitchell?
I do.
You know him?
Well, I just need a nomination. Make a motion to nominate Mitchell.
Motion to nominate Mitchell Walker as a nominee, to nominate him as a candidate for consideration for the appraisal district board of directors, to be ultimately determined by that board of directors.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, that gets us down to our oral and written reports, and item number 12. You've been provided by that, once again, by Barbara gave that to you last week.
Make a motion.
I think I heard Commissioner Applewhite first, and second Commissioner Fitch to approve. Any discussion, questions, comments? All in favor say aye. And then item number 13, Cheryl has provided you with the treasurer's report.
Make a motion to approve the report.
Motion to approve the treasurer's report is made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All in favor say aye. Here are each of these signing copies of those two documents that I'll pass down there to you. Item number 14, we have a budget amendment. This is budget item, budget amendment number 12 for the current year, 2021-12, and we need apparently some more postage money at the JP's office. And there is a reason for this, and I'm going to let Barbara explain that to you in a moment, but $2,000 is what is needed to get them through the rest of the year. This is an increase at the request of Judge Agan and Judge Dunn for postage for the remainder of the fiscal year with an offsetting decrease to general county contingency. So this does pull from our contingency fund $2,000. And Barbara, you did a great job of explaining this to me the other day. Would you add anything that you want to this? How often do we make these big bulk purchases of postage, and how the timing can affect this from once in a while?
I believe that previously, the county likely did those annually, because what we found last year in auditing these, we found that there was a large payment that the county had made in previous years that has not ever been given, the county has not been credited for, was around $10,000. So that's the reason why Judge Steve Agan and Irma Dunn were not aware of the fact that they had that money sitting out there. So we requested that that company apply those funds and make them available. So during the course of the last year, we used those funds. So therefore, when they came, approached the court about their budget, they didn't request any more funds because they weren't aware that they were using prior year funds. Since then, we make sure when we do these, we only do as needed. We don't send these large sums to the postage company for them to hold for us. So we have an email from Judge Agan where he got with Irma and made sure, in their opinion, they thought that this would be enough to get them through the end of September. Having said that, they did caution that, you know, things change. If they have to have more postage due to COVID, those kind of things, we could come back and ask for more. But at this point, they think that this would cover what they need for the rest of the year.
And it said, the $2,000, is that for each of them or together?
That's together.
Oh, together, okay.
All right. Need a motion to approve that one budget.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Fitch. All in favor say aye. Item 15, sign pay orders and approve bill payments.
Make a motion to repair bills.
Motion is made by Commissioner Applewhite, albeit hesitatingly.
Second. Can I get a second?
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor say aye. All right, item number 16, as a reminder, we'll meet for our kickoff meeting with Gary Luba and H.W. Lochner, and Gary may bring somebody with him, and then we're going to have, I believe, on the phone, Kristy Fincher from Tech dot. And Gary is sending me a message here, "I'm on my way 10 minutes ago. Sorry, I'll be running a little late." I think he thinks it's a 10:30 meeting, so we're going to be okay. I told him we'd be done sometime between 10:30 and 11:00. So anyone in the public is welcome to stick around and listen to that kickoff meeting to discuss the FM 1735 project and the role that Lochner will play as our right-of-way consultant. Item number 17, wrapping up with closing comments, just another COVID report. Our active cases stands at 400 and, let's see, 79 as of today, a dramatic spike up in the last week when it was down below 100, which I don't know why, because it seemed like half of that 100 was in the hospital. Hospital continues to be quite crowded with COVID patients. They've had to create more additional rooms to satisfy the demand there. The ICU is staying full, not necessarily with COVID patients. In fact, as of Friday, I don't think they had any COVID patients in ICU, but there's probably some that might, could have been in ICU, but because of the demands of other types of patients, ICU was full. So the county hospital is uncomfortably full. The vaccine continues to, it's just trickled in. We are expecting another decent-sized shipment this week, but it is going to be a while before all the folks that want to get a vaccine or have a chance to get their vaccine. And as of after last week, the state has made the determination to get as many people vaccinated one time as possible. So if you were vaccinated from last Monday or later, you are not guaranteed a second vaccine within that 28-day timeframe. They will instead disperse that second dose to others that have not had it. Everyone that was inoculated prior to last Monday will be guaranteed their second dose. There have been several incidences of symptoms upon receiving that second vaccine after the first one was administered a month earlier. Chief McCray is getting his today. I guess he'll let us know how he fares, but Tracy Smith from the hospital, I spoke to her. her on Friday, she was heading home because she felt lousy and had fever after she had just gotten that second dose the day before. And this is popping up, and apparently, I don't know how common of a problem is, but just for those of you that are getting ready to have a second dose, maybe in this audience, just be aware that that is the word. Now, I've known some others that have had their second dose, and they had not one bit of problem with it. So we're hoping that that'll be a small number of people. We are still working hard to be approved as a hub for distribution for the vaccine, but that has not come to fruition yet. Spoke with Judge Stout from Gregg County on Friday about how they had achieved that status as a hub and just warding and needling the right people, I think, is what's helped. And they'll start their bulk distribution at their fairground, I believe, this week. So we'll hopefully be able to pattern our performance on what they do, but we've got to get some more vaccines in before we can worry about how we're going to administer them. What else? What else? That's all I can think of for right now. Jeff, any closing comments?
No comment.
John?
John, are y'all still doing some work for Bowie County? Kind of their computer glitch over there?
We're doing birth certificates and marriage licenses.
So.
Trying to help them out because of their residency.
How long you think that's going to take? Just not telling.
They do have, in the Boston office, they do have, they have it backed up and running, but their, Bowie County is a much larger county. They have like five town offices. So they're trying to get that, they're trying to get the land records back up and running initially because that's going to impact Commerce, but, and then they're, you know, so we're still trying to help them.
That was a bad thing over there.
What happened to?
They got a virus in their computers.
They're tagged.
Ransomed. So it was really busy over here last week. I come over, talk to Joyce and get some stuff, and it was because the stairway was hopping, people coming over getting their birth certificates.
Or other counties giving them some help also?
Pass.
Okay.
Pass County.
Okay, so they've been working extra.
And also the city of Petropina, they also, they're on the SAVL office, and so they are impacting the design past the county offices in Boston.
Interesting. Bad stuff.
I'm good. Dana?
Like I said, I've talked to John Mark about our workers are essential, and he said we should fall into that category that, you know, go ahead and put your name down, put on your, call your pharmacy, put it in the hospital if you want the shot. So it may be a while, but you are.
It may be a while, and I certainly hope we can get the 65 and older and the more vulnerable folks with health problems, I believe, should come ahead of our good, healthy, and young employees, but it doesn't hurt anybody to get on one of these lists. Having the list full and having a backlog will help in the distribution of the vaccine because it gives the hospital with their software a chance to make the determination as to who is going to be next and who will be getting those phone calls. So they're going to continue to zero in on the most effective use of that. You know, some teachers have gotten it already. The belief there is, you know, they're around a lot of kids, and, you know, if we can choke this virus down in the areas where it is most possible to spread it, that would be the best thing. But yeah, I encourage anybody to get on a list somewhere.
Just be safe, you know, just do what's best for the community.
Which is wearing a mask. Okay. Commissioner Parker?
Only thing I've got is the four of us will be going to school next week, so I guess you'll need to post that, that we will, don't you usually post that, that we're?
When do you all leave?
Next Monday.
Okay, next week.
Yeah, next Monday.
Thought we done it right for court. We easily done.
They've changed it this year, though. They changed it from the second Monday to the first Monday for some reason or another. I don't know.
James, will you help me remember that? That is a good idea to put something just on the door, just saying, these commissioners will be away at school as normally they are this time of the year, but no business will be conducted while they're away. I'll help you with that if you'll help me remember it. Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
That's all I've got.
All right. Anyone in the audience? Okay, we'll take a break here and regather in the next few minutes. We'll be looking for Gary Luba. He may be outside. He may still be en route to have that kickoff meeting. We will adjourn after that kickoff meeting, so I'll let you know. We're not officially adjourning yet.
Let us hear you, Kristi.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you decently.
Okay.
Give me another test comment.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we're okay. We can, we'll be able to hear you.
Okay. Do you want us to start or?
Yeah, just go ahead, Kristi.
Okay. Well, we were wanting to have a kickoff meeting today for the FM 1735 project. This is a project that the county has hired Lochner to acquire and I believe relocate utilities on. Techs dot will, is responsible for monitoring the acquisition process, and then Techs dot will also be responsible for the relocation assistance if anybody has like personal property relo or business relo or residential relo. I do not believe there's any business relo on this project that we're aware of. It's just residential, maybe some personal property and just a few parcels of that. We have given the property descriptions out already, and we had a few priority parcels which I have given to Gary. They are parcel six, seven, 18, and then 22, 329, which is kind of a lot of parcels that are party, but we need these parcels due to some environmental issues or process, not really issues, but a process that we must go through. And then I was going to let Dan speak to the environmental reeval that we have going on right now.
Good morning. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Very good. And so yes, let me just give you an update. So this project was actually environmentally clear in 2019. We had our surveyors out there a couple of months ago setting monuments, and at that point, some property owners were somewhat surprised at where the monuments were being placed, so we pulled our surveyors off, we went back through, and what we realized was since the public meeting in 2018, what we showed the public, there were some changes in the right-of-way. Now, they were fairly minor, but to a property owner, you know, we don't want them to be surprised. And so what we're doing is a reevaluation of those parcels, actually the project, and so we've sent comments, forms out to property owners along with the proposed right-of-way. And I think that comment period goes through the end of this week. After we get all those comments, we are having our historical biology and archaeology sections just look at that. It wasn't a huge difference in right-of-way, but we do get it cleared exactly what we're buying. So we anticipate everything to be re-cleared, assuming that there's nothing surprising, by the end of February, if not sooner. So we probably will wait to give the go-ahead until all that is cleared up. We don't want to miss step, and, you know, we want to do what's appropriate. So I hope that that is clear. If y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Dan, this is Brian. Did you say the end of this week is the end of comment period?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We asked for comments, and I may have to just be postmarked by this Friday, but that was the intent.
Have since when to make comments?
I think we sent letters out second week in January. Katie, you might have more information to provide for that. I can't remember exactly when they went out.
Yes, I believe it was the second week in January. I'll pull the date real quick and let you know.
Have you got any responses thus far?
Dan, I can answer that. I have not received any letters back. I have received a couple of phone calls and talked to two property owners and one utility. So two property owners and one utility. No one was, they shared questions about the process. So nobody expressed or thus far has expressed anything as far as negative about the project, just more questions. So, and the letters did go out on the 13th of January.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So just, if you don't mind if I clarify, Dan, we are not going to begin an appraisal process or anything like that until after this reeval is over, correct?
Yes, by our rules, we can begin, but I just don't think that's the wisest thing to do. You know, we've asked for comment. I think we go back through the process and make sure that we're treating it appropriately. So I think it's worth waiting a few more weeks just to make sure we're all clear, and, you know, we want to be upfront and transparent with the public.
Okay. Does the county have any questions or anything about the process or anything?
I don't think we do. We're going to rely heavily on Gary to help us, you know, articulate the questions that we have, but I don't think anybody on the court does has a question at this time, but I don't want to assume. Guys, anybody have a question?
No. I had a, one of the landowners called me and asked me about fencing and all the other day, wanted to know who was responsible for that, if it would be county or?
Just one of my commissioners, Sandy, got a phone call from someone asking about fencing. Good that you referred him to us.
I told him that we both have this meeting and that I'd try to find out something.
When we're going to do the appraisal, we'll figure out the price of the 10 million that might be appreciated or whatever. That's all, but if Mr. Walker would do, would have a number of added cost security, was likely to give the cost new, but they're paying money to take care of it.
So is it best for him to respond that, you know, details like that should be handled between you and your partner?
That's what I told him. I said, after that meeting, I can tell you a little more, but I said, probably I will refer you to them.
I think that's all we got, Dan.
Okay.
Hey, Kristi, I was just going to, now that July, we have, are y'all checking any parcel maybe, or did we do some of the last sheets?
Jeff, are you on here? Can you respond to that?
Or Barbara? The only, this is Jeff. The only revisions that we're expecting are just if the surveyor consultant didn't address any comments we'd marked up before. So there should not be any changes for right-of-way limits or anything at this time. We'll just be reviewing it for, make sure the surveyor finished up all the comments we had before, and once that's done, we'll get the map finalized.
Okay. Is there a, so that is before the, in the February, yes?
We'll work as hard as we can to get it done, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we don't have any other questions.
Is there a group?
We're not hearing anything from anyone.
Sorry, I was on mute, sorry. I was talking.
I'm good.
Okay. Let me look at my notes right here and make sure that we've got everything. You already had the right-of-way map, you already had a preliminary right-of-way map. We already have property descriptions handed out. Normally I go over like the negotiations, eminent domain process, negotiations, which the county has hired Lochner and, you know, but, you know, we prefer to do personal contact if possible. I know in times of COVID that it's not always possible to do personal contact. And then also eminent domain process, that will be something that, you know, Gary and Lochner, they're, works with the county on, as they stated before, and the Techs dot is responsible for our relocations. And I guess we'll have to figure out who is responsible for moving the improvements. I don't think that we discussed that before, but we'll discuss that and get back on that. And title, that's a responsibility for, you know, for the county and Lochner to get title and review it and clear it. Is this going to be acquired in Techs dot's name or is it required in the county's name and then we'll do a 1D to the state?
Well, I mean, the last time that I worked for the county on the car flow road, I think we just, we just made the state to bring D. That way you can see that step, you don't have to take it in their name and then do another D.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure what we're doing on this. And also, Gary, will you be providing the county with weekly status reports?
Sure.
Okay, would you mind copying me on the business well?
Sure.
Okay, so we can keep up with the process. Like I said, Techs dot's just, we're just here to monitor the process and make sure that you just, you know, follow all the rules.
Right.
Which I know Lochner has worked for Techs dot before, Gary and Steve, all these guys have worked for us before, and they all do a great job. So does Lochner have any questions?
No, I'm good.
Kristi?
Yes?
This is Dave Ivins with Lochner. How are you doing today?
Good.
Okay, well, I know nobody wants to hear this, but Lochner has two pages of questions concerning utilities because this is a process that is not terribly common. While we think we know how you want things handled, we want to make sure we go over it with somebody. I'm pretty sure that you don't want to go through these two pages today, and I'm also pretty sure that in some cases, we're going to have to look things up. I don't know how familiar, I know that Kristi and Natalie, I believe you're both utility coordinators, and I know Katie is on the call, but I'm not really sure how familiar you are with the process, and the LPA is in charge of doing utility relocations and adjustments. So I'm guessing there's going to have to be some research done. I don't know how you want to do this. If you want me to send these questions to somebody at Techs dot, somebody at the county, and they can do some research, and we can schedule another meeting or get back with us, you know, I don't really know how you want to proceed.
So this is Dan, and I think sending those questions ahead of time would be great. I guess we do need to establish for utilities, who will be our contact at both Lochner and the county to make sure everybody is kept in the loop? Who do we need to send those, that correspondence to? We need to go ahead and establish that.
Well, and that was one, that's actually the first two questions I have. Who is the contact for the county and who is the contact for the state? For Lochner, you can send any questions to myself, and I will forward them to the appropriate parties within Lochner.
Okay. Does the county wish to be on all those correspondence?
Do you need to, Gary? I don't think so.
I wouldn't mind seeing the progress.
Yeah, I mean, how about just to get your summary?
That'll be fine, yeah.
Okay, you hear that, David?
Yeah, and, you know, the thing of it is, we would be providing. Uh, yeah, and, and, you know, the thing of it is, we would, we would be providing, uh, uh, summaries of, of what is being accomplished. Most of what I'm looking at right now is procedural questions. Uh, and it's, it's really, if, if, I would think that if the county wants to be involved with those, it would probably just be as a pass-through. You're just gonna look at it. It's, it, these are not questions that I believe you would be able to answer. These have to do with procedural issues within TechSight, because your agreement with TechSight says that we're gonna follow all TechSight procedures. And there are some things that are just not terribly clear in TechSight's manual as to exactly how things are gonna be handled, so.
Yeah, I'd probably send them to get with the TechSight's utility coordinator on that page.
And I understand that, and that's the reason I was curious about in the beginning, who would my contact be? Uh, are we gonna go through Chrissy and let her get it to the appropriate parties? Are we gonna go through Deanne? Are we gonna go, go through Katie? Are we gonna go through Chrissy? You know, there...
But I, I think, I think Chrissy Melder as our utility coordinator would be the most appropriate person. Um, you know, the rest of us will get involved as needed, because you're right, some of our process is not very clear and we will make sure to coordinate with our utility section and with you to make sure everything's being followed accordingly.
And that's fine, and just so that you'll understand the nature of my questions or our questions, it, it, you know, there is a form, U-43A and B, which is basically the standard U-35, but for use with local participating authorities. Well, there are some significant differences between the U-43 and the U-35, you know, in the way of attachments and so on and so forth. And we have some questions about how they want, y'all want that handled.
Understood, and we will make sure, um, Chrissy gets with you and then also gets with our Austin right-of-way division.
That'll be fine. There's, obviously, there's no great big rush on this, because it's, we, you know, was led off in this meeting. Uh, we're not even gonna be able to start, you know, looking at the right-of-way acquisition process for about another month or in a week. Uh, so, you know, it, it doesn't have to be answered in the next few hours. It's just something that we're gonna need to know in the long run.
Absolutely, absolutely. And just so you know, we have sent out the notice of proposed construction to receive feedback of which utilities we believe are in conflict. And so, the next step would be sending out the NOR letters, um, required accommodation. And so, we'll get with y'all on how that's done and, and the process for that, so we can...
Well, and see there again, you've, you've addressed two of the questions that are on our list. Had NOPCs been sent out? How do we wanna handle NORAs? So, I, I think we're, I think we're thinking along the same lines. Uh, we are very familiar with TechSight's process for utility adjustments. It's just utility adjustments done by the LPA is a little bit different than if it's done directly by TechSight. I will, I will email these questions to Christie, I mean, Christina Melder, which Christie Fitcher just sent me her email address. And, uh, you know, then she can forward them to whoever she needs to forward to, and we can kinda go from there and establish a lot of communication.
I think that's perfect.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, um, as David mentioned, I put David Ivins' email address and Christina Melder's email address in the chat, um, and I can email that directly to anybody that needs it as well. Um, as far as acquisition at this time, um, until we get the, till the appraisal process starts, um, I'm sure there will be questions that we, we may need to address. Um, but, um, at this time, I don't, I don't have any further questions, um, or comments. Gary, do you?
No, I don't. I'm good. Any of you guys have any questions?
I've been, we're good.
I'm like, everybody's good, Christie.
Okay. Um, well, I guess if everybody is good, we can, we can end this part of the meeting, and we appreciate everybody signing in, and, um, please don't hesitate to contact us. My name is Chrissy Fitcher on the right-of-way section of, of TechSight. I apologize, I didn't introduce myself properly at the beginning of this. Um, but if you have any questions, you can, um, contact me. Um, Gary has my contact information, and, um, I don't know that the judge and Deanne have any correspondence with each other over all this. So, anything you need, um, don't hesitate to, to let us know. We'll be glad to try to help in any way possible.
Thanks, Christie.
All right, thanks.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Goodbye.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Well, I didn't know what to expect. I thought it might be a longer, more detailed meeting and, you know, I don't know. I don't expect, I mean, they might have to say...
Well, tell us what you told me earlier about, uh, where we are with environmental and what that does to en- enabling you to begin work or...
Yeah, it's just, uh, like, um, you are, Deanne is saying there's, I think, a property owner out there, I'm not sure which one, and had, uh, uh, noticed that, I guess, the line within the place where he had been told back in, I think, 2018. And so, and Katie's already gonna, you know, dig up the monuments that they put out there. Uh, so they're rechecking that, and what, so what happened is they got to, you know, if there's anything additional, uh, if the line takes in more right-of-way or whatever, they may have to cover that environment. And so, they gotta work toward that clearance, and they're, and they're thinking it's just gonna be by the, you know, the end of February to get that clearance, and then they'll release us to move ahead with the appraisal process. Now, the appraisers will probably go in and start, just their research. You know, we'll get that, at least, that's a lot of it.
When you say research, that's non-communication stuff?
Yeah, yeah, research of the market and stuff, but we don't wanna move ahead. I think we can do that, but we don't wanna move ahead and make offers, you know, prior to the environmental clearance.
And that's even all the ones that haven't been cleared previously?
That's way sound, Deanne was saying that.
That was the part I didn't understand. It's not, parcels were still clear for you or not.
Right.
And environmental kinda puts a hold on the whole deal.
Yes. But I would give Christie, though, to make sure that we're okay with, with having the appraisal to start. Like I said, I don't, I don't see what it would hurt, you know, hurt us to start it and research. I mean, I mean, she'll probably have to call property owners, just, uh, you know, like pretty frequent contact application, but that's not figuring up a value and, and us making a haul, you know, which we can't do, you know, until the environmental clearance.
You know, most of, uh, I'll be sure that you get Jimmy Parker's contact information. He's the commissioner of that area and probably...
Yeah, I, I do that.
Probably the most familiar with who lives up and down there if you need help tracking somebody down or whatever.
All right.
Um, tell us a bit about, uh, about the appraisal process, and who will be the people that actually knock on doors or make phone calls with landowners and say, "Hey, we're ready to sit down and talk with you"?
I do that, yeah. Appraisers, you know, I'll, I'll have them look up the, uh, we've got a really good tool to find, you know, contact information, uh, that we pay for, you know, it's really good, and so we can find and provide, you know, pretty well. And I can start contacting them, like, "Hey, we're getting ready, you know, come your way, you know, pretty soon." But it'll take the appraisal to get started for probably gonna 30 to 45 days. And then, and then it goes to the review appraiser. Now, he's just checking her work to make sure she's following the appraisal guidelines, state guidelines, things like that. And once he signs off on his review, then we're ready, you know. It's, I don't think TechSight, they, they, they may wanna sign off on those. What they're called is, it's a tabulation form, I think they can. And Michael Lightfoot may wanna sign off on those, probably. But he's just, since they've already been reviewed, he's probably not gonna really look at it, but it's just more of a format of for him to sign off. And then they can, they can go. And, uh...
And it'll be Lochner personnel that actually meet with the landowners?
Yes.
And I guess that'll be done over the phone at least initially?
Or it's all in person, yeah. Probably do a lot of these in person, because, you know, they're mostly residential and things like that, so it, it works better to do face-to-face, as much as you can, and, you know, be willing to speak.
Give us some coaching, specifically give Jimmy Parker some coaching when these landowners call and they're mad at the ridiculous offer that they've been given and the unreasonableness of the guy they're negotiating with. And we're hoping this is a fraction of what we dealt with on our Big Loop project. I don't recall us even having any problems out there on Parcs Bluff other than...
No, we didn't.
I don't think we did, out of the Big Loop.
We had one on that was kinda the thing for us, you know.
Was he the one we had to move the house?
No, no, that was across the street. They, they just had to barbed wire, they had some, you know, some trees that had to block their land and things like that. They were probably the most difficult, you know, and they, they didn't really have a great amount. It, it works that way sometimes.
Well, we've had, we've had some different experiences on the, on the Big Loop project, you know, some really irate. And the problem that, that I saw was the difficult position that the commissioners were put in when they started contacting them and saying, "Well, my commissioner just doesn't, he doesn't, he doesn't care about me. They're letting these guys walk all over me, and, and, uh, why won't he step in and help me? I've told him how much my land is worth, why isn't that..." What is our proper response? And hopefully, we won't deal with this, but eventually, we're gonna deal with at least one or two.
Oh, probably, but we'll try to keep that down.
And what's the standard line? We've turned everything over to Lochner and we're stepping back away from this and...
Well, I mean, y'all are involved, and we, uh, just say they will have an opportunity, you'll have an opportunity to provide a counteroffer, and they can do that through me. And I will help them, whatever, put something together, respond, and try to keep them from calling Jimmy. And, uh, turn it over to you guys, and y'all can review it, you know, and make, make sure that, "Hey, is this, is this something we can do and live with and go on and avoid, uh, you know, eminent domain time and calls, stuff like that?" And so...
The landowners are explained about eminent domain and that that's always a possibility if we can reach an agreement?
Yes. Yeah.
Another one of the problems that we dealt with was the gentleman that was hired by the time, uh, property acquisition specialist was, was a bit rough. He was a slick Houston attorney and some of his staff, and they got, they got kinda rough with some of our landowners, as I recall, and so we would certainly ask...
Uh, whose, were they on the property owner's side or...?
No, they were working for the county.
Oh.
Trying to negotiate some of these deals. And I don't know if it was, uh, you know, I know that attorney's name, and I know that, you know, he was accused of being mean and hateful and rough and unreasonable. I don't know, I wasn't sitting in on any of those meetings, but that came up more than one time, and we'll just trust that Lo- that's not Lochner's style. That Lochner would be a good representation of the East Texas way of treating people with courtesy and passion and understanding.
Absolutely.
And we, we still may disagree with him, but we're not gonna, you know, but we're not gonna make him mad because we're then being...
Sure.
Pushing.
And normally, uh, you know, you may, hopefully, we don't get into this, but, you know, going back and forth with counteroffer, counter to counteroffer and stuff like that. You know, make up with something reasonable, we'll give them some guidelines. And say, "Okay, are you wanting more on land? Why, you know, do you have some, some reason sales comparable to through that that you're asking for a acre? Uh, you know, fencing, whatever, do you have some estimates, you know, you can get to this? So, y'all have some backup, you know, supporting docs to look at, you know, they're, they're not kind of just like looking for windfall or something like that, and some people do that. I mean, that's just, I see it, you know, every project I'll be on, you know.
Keeping this in perspective, the total amount of acreage that we're talking about acquiring is less than 20 acres, my all?
No, yeah.
More like 13 acres?
Right.
So, we're, we're shaving and slivering into these people's property. I don't think we're putting a road smackdown in the middle of somebody's pasture or we got to...
On some of these residential where you're getting closer, there could be some proximity things that if, if the appraiser finds likely, like another property that's similar, and were they affected? Did they have, did they have an economic, you know, impact on their remainder or their house? They're compensated for that, but that could be in an area that you get into as to the amount of, you know, economic damage and stuff like that. Uh, I saw a couple of houses out there that, that's probably gonna be the, the case. On the east side, I think it's close to, what is, what is the Edgar Road? Is it in the 2000 or 4000?
4000.
4000, I think it's in that vicinity on the, on the east side. So, it might be, I'm gonna say two or three houses from what I remember that could be some proximity issues with the, with the right-of-way line. I think the road is right along.
Meaning you're getting a little too close for comfort to my house with this road?
Yeah, yeah. But the appraiser will look at that and she'll determine if there is any diminution of value on their, their remainder, and they're compensated for that. They may disavow, and they may not think enough, but we, we'll know that when we get there, negotiate with, you know.
And then we, we need to remind them, if we're, if we talk to them, you know, "We didn't design this project, we didn't do the engineering, we didn't decide how wide things were or what, or what properties..."
Right.
And we, this, these were not county decisions, they weren't Lochner's decisions.
Not, not totally.
We're given a list of information. Well, I remember having that conversation with some of these landowners. "Why are you having to get this call?" I don't know why, I'm, I'm just a county judge.
Yeah, and what I hope to get is, is I don't know how far they are on, on the plans, and I do have this coming out, you know, they, they did update that a little bit, they do have that, so I can carry that with me, and we can look at plans and think that's what I do too. So, I mean, I've been doing this for 20 years, and I've dealt with all kinds of people, and I'm usually pretty successful, and there's always somebody that's gonna be difficult to deal with, you know, but, but I, you know, I overcame a lot of that stuff, you know, in the past.
How many dwellings do we have that are being wiped out?
Two.
Two? Are these both lived in by the owner or are they rent properties?
I think they're lived in by the owner, but I'm not positive on that. We'll, we'll find that out when we get to talking.
Email?
The, yeah, the, the, I was trying to think, uh, the ones where the old store was there is one of them, and, uh, the guy that owns it, excuse me, the guy that owns the property, uh, his son lives in, in it, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it is.
Uh... The latest.
So, yeah, this is one of them right here, and it's a mobile home. You can see the, the majority of it, and it's right here, County, County Road 4815. Yeah, they're right there, so they are, they're totally taken. You know, that's their, I guess, their back stoop or whatever it is back here. You know, but they're totally inside right here, it's just boundaries of the mobile home.
Okay.
And so, that's parcel 24, and it's, uh, let me see who they are.
Code man is living there. What code man is living there?
Yeah, I think so. I thought that's one he showed in there, then.
Blake, yeah.
Says it's Jennifer Pope. Does that ring a bell?
That, yeah, it's, oh, yeah, it used to be Blake.
And you got the other one here, it's like this parcel 25. There's actually, I think they use this house maybe for storage, but you got another kinda mobile home right here, and the owner says Billy Edwards.
Yeah, Billy Edwards.
So, that's, that's the only two, the other things that could be like personal property land in the right-of-way.
That was the one that I was talking about was, was, uh, it used to be an old store.
Oh, it did?
Yeah.
I'll show you.
And, uh, uh, in fact, he is my wife's aunt's brother is who he is, so I know, you know, know them real well, but...
Okay.
Uh, that was an old store, and I think his son's still living in, in part of that old store, yes.
Okay. And I assume looking at... And I assume looking at this, it's from the outside, it looks like maybe they just used it for storage on their...
Think so, yeah. His house is actually back here, like this, right back here.
Okay. It's a good thing it looks like that cell tower is not affected, which is a good thing. I tell you.
Yeah, it's it's right back beside Bill's house.
Okay.
The cell tower is.
Okay.
It's behind those other two buildings there that you were showing and, uh, so it's, uh, yeah, that's...
But, I mean, we, you know, we dealt with a lot of renovations in the past too, so that's, it's typical, you know, what we're gonna be doing.
The water tower, anything changed on that that you know of?
No, what I've thought about doing...
For the water storage thing?
Right, and I think I mentioned this to Jimmy in the past and I talked to Dave about it. What I'm gonna do is give a text doc a couple of, I don't know for the hell, that's, I think it's parcel twenty-two, I'm gonna show you the, the right of way, like comes right along and just the right of way line to the tank and, uh...
Well, it it's actually gonna gonna take in where the pump station and everything is in it, but it's it's right up to the edge of the tank, it's there.
Right, yes, it's gonna be right up to...
That property right behind it, they had set it up and we had approved for a subdivision in there and supposedly they've sold part of that off or something that that went by the wayside. In fact, I've talked to Joyce about it. Uh, that was the one that, you know, the guy died, that Gary Neal, and, uh, the guy called me the other day and I said, "You're gonna," I told him him then, I said, "You're gonna need to text doc to text doc about that," 'cause he was wanting to to start doing some some work in there and I told him, I said, "That's gonna take in part of that."
Developer or...
Well, he's, this is the way I understood it, it was a Hispanic guy and he was just going to, uh, uh, they were gonna build or something other in there.
So he...
And he had bought to the corner to that forty-eight fifteen and right behind the water tire and everything there and I told him, I said, "Some of that's gonna change," which I figured that that's where Tri Suds is gonna have to move back, you know, and all of that. So I told him, I said, "Before you start any kind of, anything in there, you better make sure what you've got and what's fixing to happen there."
Right, I figured they'll need, you know, some of that property, you know, to...
Behind it, yeah, yeah.
And, uh, but what I was, Jimmy, this right here, sort of line comes right up to UC, there's a little inset here, I thought they had a little...
Yeah.
Point seven of a foot, you know, so it's right there.
At the tank, yeah.
And I don't know if it's a help or what I thought about doing, we can talk to Tri Suds and say, "Hey, can, uh, can this be," you know, we text out, "Can this be notched back a little bit?" So, you know, get a little, I don't know, five feet maybe or something? Now, these are gone, they're gonna have to be...
They're gonna have to be...
Be relocated.
That's what the pumps are.
Yeah, that's the pumps and all of that.
What I've thought about for what they're losing here is that they can come and, you know, large, you know, make this triangle set larger so they can relocate these two things.
Behind the tank instead of in front of the tank or something?
Right, right. I have no idea.
Yeah, I don't know how that'll have to work. That owner right there, that property is is, uh, yeah, they, the way I understand it, the, of course, it's Gary Neal died last two weeks, three weeks ago or something like that.
Okay.
And from what I understand, they had, uh, sold this part here from the county road to back here somewhere. It may have been all the way back, I don't know for sure.
So, okay.
But I I told that guy, I said, "Before you start anything, you probably need to know for sure what all's fixing to transpire there."
Do you have a number for that guy? That's where they could draw him or something?
I don't know if I ever wrote his number down there.
Well, we can look and see if he just bought it and, yeah, you probably, you know, find him.
He bought it from Gary, the state?
Uh, the way I understand, I think this this, which is, that that is, right there, X Y.
X Y.
X Y, uh, and I think that that, the way I understood it, he bought it from her, the way I understood him.
So it may be part of his estate still?
Possibly could, uh...
Gary Neal died, I said, a couple of weeks ago?
Yeah, I thought it was about four, yeah, I think it was.
And that was the, say, Hispanic guy that bought it?
Oh, that bought it?
Yeah, that bought it.
Well, we can get you in touch with his widow if that is necessary.
Oh, I don't know how much Gary was involved in it, um, and if he was just, uh, do you know, Jordan?
Raina Barrett was also part of it.
She and her and him were owners together.
She's a sister of mine, yes.
Okay, Raina Barrett.
Raina, Raina and Gary, your brother and sister?
Yes.
Oh, they are? I didn't realize that. I didn't realize that.
Yeah, like I said, I I don't know, that's just a question I added to the word notes now. Could text out what they'd be willing to do.
Yeah.
They may not.
That little bit, come in.
Yeah, I wouldn't. I've seen similar things done before and I think it could be done and it might help save that that tank there, that's gonna be the...
That'd be the big expense right there, yeah, yeah.
Quite just the same.
And they're all funded at this point.
Well, I assume that's why they got that closest, so we wouldn't have to move it. 'Cause I thought originally it had to be moved.
Oh, it might have, huh?
Well, I was kind of thinking that too, right, was that the first indication was that they were gonna have to move the tank and everything back?
Yeah, that'd be okay where it's at right now, you know, if it's not, if it's not touching.
Okay.
What else do you know? So, while he's the new commissioner?
Here on the end.
Your project, Howard's place?
Yes, sir.
Another meeting. Anything else anybody has?
I, I don't think I've got anything new.
Okay.
Do you think we'll start, you first start paying money out?
Let's see, well, we have to say we have some people that are okay with the office. They've gotta get like thirty days on the office and then, you know, if they're living at it, they they go over that, you know, we can say, "Okay, we'll give them an extension" or something, you know, maybe we could do to look at it, if they come through, well, then we'll give the deed signed, so if they come through, we'll give the deed signed and then what we'll do is we'll put together a a funding request package for you, yeah, and whatever you want included and then we, what we normally do, we text out, we'll put a copy of the deed and we'll have a, and we're in a little agreement, which is a challenge of a sales agreement, it's kind of a time that is used and it just kind of reiterates and then, uh, and then, uh...
This is going after George College.
And if y'all need, y'all need like a, uh...
We're on the streets, is it the loop?
Uh, or then, or, well, the title, it's a, there was an issue of ten ninety-nine.
So what is, what is going on there?
But I'm not really, so, get number ready, thank y'all do that and say it's okay. And y'all will really need, I guess it'll be the title, the title.
Yeah, that's an old store.
And does the commissioner's court for approval?
Yeah, you know, and how hard it is, y'all need a lot of, yeah.
Well, always second and fourth, my base.
Okay.
And he's posted, what, seventy-two hours before?
Yeah, so typically, typically the Wednesday before those meetings.
Okay, second and fourth, please.
And then, you know, maybe some of the Wednesday, you know, later than the evening prior to that meeting.
Okay, and if they, if they accept, then what we'll do though is when the appraisers come in, y'all can, uh, you know, you can approve the value, you know, and commissioners for me, the only thing we have to do is we can go in, if they accept it, we can just move on and I don't think they have to come back through the court unless they have a counteroffer, you know? Then, you know, I'll send it back through y'all and I hope y'all wanna look at it or commissioners for time or just outside of that.
So I don't even remember ever having that situation come up when we were working on the Big Loop.
Oh, you did? Wow, okay, that must've been pretty good.
I mean, it wasn't if we didn't have folks that weren't happy with the dollar figure. I don't remember ever that...
I know we did that one time on Hart's Bluff.
Yeah, and I remember that.
There were all the ones, you know, that I think we had a counteroffer, you know?
You know, we've just got to keep in mind that we've got a certain amount of money here and we need to try to stay in there and every time you, every time you give a little bit more, you know, it can, it can add up.
Well, I mean, this is, I mean, I've seen the text doc, you know, it just depends on like where you're at, you know, project, hey, do we need to go and deal with this? Maybe we don't, maybe we don't agree with the amount really, but just for the sake of time or something, we'll do it, but that might be later on, you know, whatever's going on.
Yeah.
And, uh, I know property owners talk, so that's, you gotta be careful of that. Thing is, I think the text doc, they subscribe to, I mean, not always, but kind of a rule of thumb, I think, is fifteen percent, so maybe go up to that no more. But other things, you just gotta weigh out the risk, you know, like, okay, we don't just say they want twenty, twenty percent more or something like that. Is it worth doing it or do we wanna take the time and the money, you know, to go through the eminent domain process?
Well, I think when you're talking about fifteen to twenty acres and paying for that land, you know, I think the expensive stuff's gonna be utilities, the the major pieces of infrastructure that have to be relocated.
Yeah.
Obviously, we're not gonna be talking about huge sums when you talk about property devaluation, so that's the one thing going in our favor is we don't have a lot of land and we don't have a lot of real valuable land out there.
Right.
Easy for me to say when I don't have that.
Any idea, Joe? Thank you, he is out there, you can just have him refer.
Up and down that road, I don't know, what is it out there today?
Five to seven thousand.
Oh, I bet it's more than...
Well... I'm not gonna say, to be truthful with you, because...
Don't say, we don't want it on camera.
Because there's an owner across the road that has got everything from the county road just past the school all the way back up to the other county road up there, other than the church and just a few little houses right in there. He owned pretty much everything there, uh, and some of the property that back over towards me that has been for sale was what I thought was enormously high.
Yeah.
So, but...
Right. I mean, the price is one thing, what we're gonna go with is what is actual comparable sales, you know?
Yeah.
And and our appraiser, she's pretty good at trying to get as many as she can, uh, usually what I say is like three to five, you know, comparable properties that they can establish, you know, the correct price and all that.
Your appraiser is not employed by Lottner, are they a third party?
Yes, yeah, and they've done, takes out our, to me, she's excellent. Her name is Christie Lynn Denny from Rockwall, so she is our daughter for East Texas, so she's real familiar, you know, with many of, you know, market things around here. Right now, she's been working on twenty-two seventy-five of George Ritchie Road extension, you know, in Long Beach.
Long Beach.
Yeah, but she's excellent, I think. I mean, I've worked with her, you know, often on product patents, what, ten, fifteen years? She's real good. And kind of like she's available, 'cause she usually stays pretty, pretty focused. So, I'm getting back to you, Barbara, I think, uh, so once y'all, once y'all go through the commissioners for, how soon, I mean, y'all have to cut the check, the annual check?
We can cut that out, we need it taken.
For, okay.
We prefer it, because that means that, you know, everybody's got sign and then the treasures are gonna be available within a week, for sure.
A week, some, yeah, some, on the text side, some of them I have to wait three or four weeks, you know? We, uh, I think, yeah.
Where's your copy of this, is he in, is he here, gentlemen? Does he have it?
You have a copy of this?
Hmm?
Jimmy, do you have a copy of this?
I've got an old copy, I think he said that was...
We need a copy of this.
I was on Hart's St. Bluff, we, uh, three, five, three hundred of all parts, they were there, but they're, I think they're not longer, I guess, maybe they were, became old land.
I think you're, I think you're being sent on, I think.
Yes, yeah. But when I work with them, I'm trying to think, uh, what text doc does, y'all have to do is on their check, they'll put both the owner's name and the title, because they have one check, and then when you turn it over to the title, they put escrow and then they'll cut out a new check just for the owner to close them, so I don't know if we have to do that. I think they can just probably just make it out to the owner, but the title, title can hold it, you know, until they get the closing schedule and just, just turn that check over to them.
It's probably a good idea if the public names are on there to make sure everything gets signed and sealed and secured.
Yeah, y'all can do that way.
What's the pleasure of the court, does it matter to you, Jimmy?
No. Doesn't matter.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
Okay. Well, we'll have plenty of time to discuss details like this later on, let's just hope to think of it.
I don't know if I sent it to you, but I've got all the property descriptions in a, like a zip file, it's P D, a zip file on that that map, so I can forward to one, uh, but, uh, at least I got those and we'll probably go ahead and start. I'll start looking at owners and working with Christie, you know, and I think we can at least do so much before we can, we can get like a signed value and make offers, you know? That way we can, we can do some more of the way on this park and planters and it saves some time.
And just hope that the environmental doesn't drag on. Gosh, it's sure dragging on on our Big Loop project.
Yeah, it was, uh, so I guess, I guess Atlantic District was doing that, I'm not sure.
Or whoever they were employing, but yeah, yeah. That cost us, I bet that cost us a year.
Wow.
Indian arrowheads and burial grounds and stuff like that.
Right, right. And I think they wanted some of these, uh, these early parcels, they wanted at least parts or something, I think they wanted to do some archaeological stuff, you know, but I, I don't guess that holds up this, this park and planters were way on, put in the federal, so, y'all know of any, like, Indian artifacts out there?
They did the, uh, artifact, Indian artifact right there in that intersection. I stopped, talked to the guy and he said it was just very trace amounts or whatever, didn't really amount to a whole lot. Some of that's gonna probably overlap. I think it's right in that right of way where they...
I think we'd have a little problem if it was across forty-nine back to the north and we're good that that way, yeah.
Yeah, right.
That's just my feelings on it from what I know and if people I've talked to down in that area.
Okay.
Soon as the zip on this, soon as that zip file on that, then we, any questions, we can look.
You want that one?
Yeah, we can leave it in the office up here?
Yeah.
Let's put it in the other office. Want to?
I might, I might have the big ones here.
Or keep it up here?
Yeah, keep it up here.
Yeah, I'll send those, those files.
Okay.
Yeah, and, uh, so was, I guess I... Yeah, and, uh, so it was, like I said, they had, they had some bourbon, those bourbon parcels, and I wanna say there were nine of them, and then they've added two or more or something, the land, and so that's, that's what we'll get started on the bourbon, you know?
Sounds complicated.
That's what I hope, you know, okay, if you're not part of them, you're all alive, we'll let it try to.
So far, I, I've had the, the, the one guy that called and asked about the fence, is the only, and the, the other Hispanic guy that had bought the, the property there, and that was just a, I mean, he didn't call me because of that, because the way he talked to me, he didn't even know anything about it.
Oh, he didn't know about the project?
After I told him that they had surveyed and all, he said, that must be what these, these markers are out here, I said, probably so, I said, so that's why I'm telling you, you better find out before you.
Right.
But the way he talked to me, he had already purchased it, so I don't know if they didn't tell him that it was coming through, or, or what the deal was on it, but.
Yeah. Well, what I think we do too, is, is, uh, set some Trisuds, we're gonna be, you know, get that, that pump house, that tank, you know, decided, and, uh, you know, start talking to them and saying, hey, you know, what do y'all think y'all need to do to restore this and?
The last time I talked to him, they hadn't really discussed a whole lot about it.
And they can acquire, you know, an easement or something like that, or, or get it complete, you know, and just, just re-put the area that they're losing, and, uh, you know, any particular person with them, Trisuds?
Aaron Gann.
A, a R O N G A N N.
It's cell phone, or you just call the office?
You're good. Aaron's cell, I don't know if I've got Aaron's or not, I've got Tony's, but.
Call Aaron G.
Yeah, we'll put in this number, this is his cell phone, nine oh three, five, six, three, four, five, three, six.
Okay. And that, you know, that might be one of the more difficult deals out there, you know?
Yeah.
So, I think we're good on that convenience store, you know, on the corner, there at forty-nine.
Mm-huh.
I don't think we're gonna be, and there's some, some right of way, I don't think it's something.
I don't think it's gonna impact it enough to.
Nah, not really.
I'll say it'll be a plus for him, that he'll cooperate.
Yeah.
Right. So, we'll see what we're gonna be, but I think the majority are gonna be happy about it.
Yeah, it is a little bit of a dangerous stretch of road.
It is, it is, uh, one, one other thing that that guy, uh, that called about the fence, asked me, he said, are they gonna shut this road down to rebuild that bridge, you know, it drops down in that draw?
Yeah.
And his is right after you come up out of that draw there, and I told him, I said, I can't tell you that, I said, that's, that'll come, he said, well, I figured it would have to come from text dot, and I said, that, that'll be them, I don't know if they'll shut it down totally until they.
Like, one side at a time?
That's what I told him, I said, I would imagine they'll do one side at a time.
They may have to go, like, some signal lights or, you know, stop, let traffic go through the, the other way, but I don't know, I mean, I don't know if they're getting up, sometimes they would go, you know, road that goes around the temporary road.
Yeah.
I'm not sure which way they're gonna go.
I figured they could go in there and, and build one side, leave it open until they get that one side built, and then move over to that side, but I, I told him, I said, that, that's their baby, it's not, you know, I, I can't tell you what they'll do there, but I do know that during school time, that is a hot, hot road.
Yeah, I would bet.
School and college and, and all of them, of course, there's a lot of, the loop has helped that, because a lot of them come in to four thousand there and hit and go on down, but they'll still be in, in the construction to the school, uh, I've got a county road that I'm trying to decide what I'm gonna do with it, because it, it cuts through there, that forty-eight fifteen, it's, uh, it's gonna be a, I figure a major thoroughfare to it, to do, or through all of this, so I'm trying to decide, and it's real narrow, and there's no, no ditch room or anything on it, so it's gonna be a, hard to do anything with it.
That's where that girl lives, the model.
Yes.
Anything else, I can thank you, you can always call me, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Got a card?
Everybody get Gary's name.
For a hundred and three.
Carter, did I, did I give you the original for this?
Get, get my magnifying glass.
Yeah, I don't know.
Hard on old people, they make it hard on old people, thank you.
Yes, sir.
We just started.
January first.
Like, where are you at?
Too bad.
Yeah, I've got, I've got one.
You have one, huh?
Yep.
Thank you, Gary.
Right, thank y'all, appreciate it, it's been here.
Right.
Sorry for having so much trouble.
I would say that we would've had even more trouble. Okay, uh, we're done for the day, I'll need a motion to adjourn, unless there's anybody that has anything else.
I'll make that motion. He made it, I'll second it.
Motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.